[inaudible]
Good morning, Father. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for this community meeting today and help us, Lord, as we go through these meetings. And the Lord would ask for your blessings on the meeting and bless everyone who's here. Just be with us and give us wisdom and strength, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Here.
Chuck Hostin Jr.
Here.
Guelle Anglin.
Here.
Jack Baker.
Here.
Joe Byrd.
Hi.
Julia Coates.
Here.
Meredith Fraley.
[inaudible]
President Don Garvin.
Hi.
Frankie Hargis.
Present.
Tana Glory Jordan.
Present.
Lee Keener.
Hi.
Dick Lay.
Here.
Credit Snell.
Here.
David Thornton.
Present.
David Walkenstee.
Honey.
Kara Cowan Watts.
Oh honey.
We do have one.
You're here to discuss the possible actions and discussion of funding and Cherokee Nation Higher Education Scholarship. Do I have your emotions in this first discussion?
Second.
[inaudible]. That's Councilor Hostin. Second one. And Kara Watts. That's where we had discussion. David, can you begin?
Yes, this is a request to amend the operating budget modification number 11 that was previously passed in the July Executive Finance Committee. It's a request for $1,034,000 for being transferred to the motor fuel tax higher education scholarships.
Come. Thank you. Is education here today to talk to us about how we have such an increase? Dr. Morton, thank you for being here today. And it sounds like you guys have done a lot of hard work for us to have 500 more people applying for the scholarship. So I have no problems with approving more money for kids or students because they're not all kids. Is, do we understand why and the number of undergraduate versus graduate? And should we expect this going forward so we need to adjust for this upcoming budget cycle? I mean, can you give me an idea of how we got here and where we need to go?
We can make a fair prediction on sophomores, juniors, seniors, and graduates. On the freshman number is where we run into trouble each year. And if you'll remember, it's about this time of year that someone from Education Services will come to you and say, hey, we need more money if we fund all students. And that's because we fund freshman students last. And that's the number that we have difficulty with. Now, it's been an extraordinary year. It's been a different type of year. We funded approximately 250 new students for the spring semester. That's about 200 more than we normally fund for spring. So that many students decided, hey, I'm going to go out in school and entered at mid-year. Now, the number of freshman students is all over the chart as far as their intentions to go to college. So this year, we've wound up with needing to fund 850 students, new students. Actually, 835 are new and 15 are continuing. So we can say most of them are new. But I might give you a little synopsis of what you are doing, the impact that you're making. These students come from 31 states. Everything from Oklahoma to DC. 31 states plus DC, put it that way. We have a student at Georgetown. Now, of that number, 80% of all of our graduate students, I'm using fiscal 12 data because the meeting's not completed yet, come from 35 schools in Oklahoma. We have, you have students in 35 schools in the state of Oklahoma, which represents about 80% of the total scholarships awarded. Now, the five biggies, that's what we call them in Education Services, the five biggies where the scholarships go are in this order. Northeastern has 641. OSU, 328. Roger State, 192. And OU has 189. So those are the, and University of Arkansas with 135. Now, the one that is apt to have the most growth is the University of Arkansas because of the campus at Fort Smith and because that was recently added, you know, last year as a contiguous county. So our growth will come from there. Arkansas has a total of 196 students and 135 of the University of Arkansas. So that is going to continue to grow. Now, the number of students that we have going to college from the 14-county, what we call the CARTAG area, from the 14-county jurisdictional area for CARTAGs, surprisingly enough, only represents about 22% of the total freshman class that graduated last spring. So many of our students go into vocational, technical education for some a year or so. Some, that's it. Then they enter college. So as far as predicting the number, it's hard to do. The reason that it becomes so, such a crisis situation at this time of year is because of the freshman student. Now, we kicked around several ideas in Education Services of how we might go about alleviating that. I have what I think is a solution, but I'm a minority on whether or not that will work or not. If you funded freshman first instead of last, it would buy a lot of time. Because you see, colleges will accept a freshman student with a seven semester transcript or they'll admit them for the fall. So we could open up freshman enrollment. Now, this is something to think about. We're not proposing this at all today. All we're asking for today is money. But this would allow the freshmen to apply for the scholarship in January. And we could process that application. And when they sent us a letter of admission from a college or university, we could cut the check and in a couple of weeks, they could already be, have money waiting on them. Because you see, the people that don't really see the impact of what you're doing are the people at home. Because when they have their awards assemblies at high schools and, you know, different companies, XYZ Foods comes out with a check for $10,000, well, actually, you're awarding $16,000 depending upon the progress of that student. And because we'll now, 10 semesters instead of eight to graduate, you can add $8,000 to that, see? No, add $4,000 to that. Okay. So you're making a big contribution, but you aren't there in your district to make the awards at honors assembly because we don't have the freshman process and are not going to have them processed, you see, under the present system. In most schools, you would be representing the biggest donor there. One of the contiguous high schools in a contiguous county contacted me this last fall and said it would be so nice, in fact, the letter went to C and B and finally came to me, be so nice if Cherokee Nation could provide some money for that particular school. And so we drew the addresses of the current scholarship recipients from that school. We're the largest donor they have. They just didn't know it. So this would, each of you have, I'll get off this picture in a minute and tell you how much money you need. Each of you have high schools in your district. And it would be, we could make a pretty big splash if we would go to those awards assemblies. Say, on behalf of Cherokee Nation, call those students up, let them line up, take their picture. Because we aren't getting that now. And it also would increase the activity in those public schools of getting Cherokee students into college. Because in some of the schools, we don't have a whole lot of effort of getting our scholarship information out. Now, with the reorganization of the College Resource Center, we're going to hit those schools and we're going to get to the students. By the way, I do have Jennifer Pigeon and Manny Scott with me today. They're primarily here to keep me from going overboard and saying, oh Neil, you're promising more than you can deliver. Because they're the ones that say, hey, that'll work or that won't work. But that would, that would make a big difference. So that's not to be considered today, but if you did, then we may still run short of money, but we'd know it much earlier. Say, hey, with this many freshmen, because it's a finite, the other's a finite number, sophomores, juniors, and seniors and graduate. You know, unless they're dropping out of school, then we have them to fund when the application comes in. So we know that number. It's just that the freshman number bounces all over the place. So getting down to the brass tacks, we have grown by 664 students, which includes the last spring growth. And we have 800, about 850 students left to fund. And with the balance that we have, announcement that we have, we can fund those with $1,034,000. So that is our request of you. The other situation, I'd like to work up a proposal and put all of the negatives and the positives of funding freshman first. Because then we'd be in a, we'd be in a constant funding cycle during the spring. And then the student would have a letter in hand, knowing how much money they were going to have. Give you an example, I'm not, I've proposed this, I've kicked this around before, let's put it this way, a miracle policy to you. I have a son, or grandson, rather, that is going to Vanderbilt. And his scholarship is based on their assumption that he's going to receive $4,000. Well, he goes to school next week. He won't have an award letter next week. But the process, let's suppose that you approve this budget mod today. We can have the checks to schools before the late fee process kicks in. And that is another factor that I'm going to work with some colleges and universities on. Some of the schools that receive the largest amount of money, even though they know the student's going to receive the money, it's not there by the first of September or so. They'll kick a $20 late charge every month until it is there. And we're going to talk about entering into contract with those schools for a certain number of students and waive late charges for those students, especially those students who decide at a last minute to go to school. And let's face it, a lot of constituents you serve don't really know whether they're going to school or not. Now, a lot of people's kids, my kids, your kids, knew they were going to school, to college when they were in grade school. A lot of your constituents don't know whether they're going to have the money to get to school after they get the scholarship, you know? So a lot of the lack of getting an application in on time is understandable. A lot of it's just flat laziness, but the majority of it's understandable. So our proposal to you today is to modify the budget and the process that we would use...
Dr. Morton?
Yes.
So we don't have those numbers in front of us, and I know you spun them off. Can we get a copy of that? So the new...
I will.
Okay.
Print it all, sir.
Thank you. Or just email it to us.
I'll leave that up.
Somebody. So the majority of them are new freshmen. And how many was that again?
The number that we have left to fund are 850. And the new ones, by new, they're freshmen, or they could, a very small number of them could be, they're just new to us. Maybe they've been in school, but they're new to us. And 15 of them are continuing students.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
And the growth factor of 664. But what we would do...
And the growth factor of the 664 is primarily...
Over last year.
Over last year. And that's what I was, is mainly freshmen?
Mainly freshmen.
Okay. And will we be tracking how many of them continue on in school or if they drop out as well?
Yes. With our new computer system, new software, we can finally get to an accurate dropout rate.
Okay. Very good.
And also with a, what do they do after they graduate?
So one last question. Will you be reflecting these new numbers in the budget that's going to be presented to us shortly, or will we need to modify that in the budget hearings? And that's already being worked on with ENF co-chairs?
The new number is flat.
So we're already looking if we're going to continue those students at another $1 million for next year in budget modifications?
For next year. In other words, this will take, this will take care, take us until this time next year.
Okay. Are we kind of looking at that already?
They're looking at it. You've got your books and I'm going to move on Kara because we haven't got much time. And if there's any time left, we'll come back to you. Deputy Speaker, Hostin.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate the problem that you're having because you've got more students, you need more money. That's a good problem to have. And I know there's a lot of factors in it. I just want to congratulate your department because from where I sit, this was the strongest effort at outreach that I've seen. There were meetings in my community and I think all around the 14 counties getting out to these kids. And that had to have had some impact on the number. So that's it. Credit to you and your staff. What is the downside of not funding those freshmen first? I know we're not on this topic, but is there, why are we not doing that?
Actually, it's, you know, procedure over time becomes policy. And I think when this program was implemented, it was, let's fund the seniors, juniors, sophomores first. Fund the graduates and freshmen last. Because of, actually, restricted dollars, in other words, budget restrictions. The downside of not funding, in other words, downside of funding freshmen first would be, unless there was a projected budget that would fund an estimate of the number of freshmen plus sophomores, juniors, seniors, and graduates. In the original budget would be a tremendous amount of money. We're spending the same amount of money, I'm just coming to you every spring and saying, hey, we need more. There will be a time perhaps when that won't be necessary, but it would require, and this may not be the year to implement it.
Thank you, Dr. Morton. Thank you, ma'am.
It probably would take some more study. And in fact, I would recommend more study.
Thank you for this information. When we first had this discussion, you know, some time back, I wasn't real clear on what you might be proposing, but we'll have a discussion later. So out of the 35 schools, we have 80% of that that we're funding in the 14 counties. With this funding, it should improve our relationship and collaboration on how we assess which of our students may go to colleges, correct?
Well, it will, actually, with the new outreach service, we're going to inquiries the number of students that apply from within the 14-county area and the adjoining states, contiguous states. Now, the contiguous states will increase too. Because you see, we really haven't, haven't really done much recruitment in the contiguous states now, of Arkansas, Kansas, Missouri.
Sure.
And so they're all over the, they're all over the map. The school that, we have about, I think about 50 students perhaps in Kansas. Pittsburgh State has the highest enrollment of only five. So it's, you know, it's scattered. So that, but yeah, the more focus on the freshmen is going to increase the enrollment.
Okay.
Of course, the freshman, the enrollment outside of the 14 counties and contiguous areas is dependent solely on Pell Grant eligible applicants.
Thank you for this report, Dr. Morton. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Walkenstee.
Dr. Morton? I don't know if the other council people have the same problem with their constituents, but there is a, the old online application, some people have got on there and filled it out somehow. And anyways, when they called up to the higher ed department, you know, they had no record of applying, they had applied for that scholarship. And I don't know if the online application's still on there or have you guys...
Manny, the online's gone, right?
Well, the foundation still has that, so it is still out there.
We are. Is there a way to get exited off, to get it off there?
Yeah. Most of the problems, Councilor Walkenstee, is that we're, well, let me just say it. We had some volunteer help from the foundation that we didn't need.
Sure. Yeah, I agree with you.
And so it was on their system, and we were using the same system.
Yeah.
So that created some problem. Now, we're wrong.
Okay. I guess we need to collaborate with the foundation. Is that something you guys do or is something we need to tell them about or about getting that? Because there's confusion there.
They can't get on the curve. In other words, this would have happened back...
Well, they can get on, but we've made a note on there too. Not be applying for the Cherokee Nation Scholarship on the split side. And we've worked with every student up until deadline and transferred them over regardless.
Okay. I have a few...
Unless they just call, they can.
Hey Manny, I have a few students. If I gave you the names, could you work with them as well, get them transferred over? Because they did apply, but they went through the online to the foundation.
Yeah.
And their attentions...
And there's some confusion there, in other words, they applied to the foundation and assume they've applied to the Cherokee Nation Scholarship.
Okay. I appreciate you guys still. Thank you.
Councilman [inaudible].
Thank you. Dr. Morton, I want to congratulate your outreach team. This is the first year that after the deadline, I didn't have a mass bunch of students calling me saying they goofed up, got it in late, whatever. And I think the outreach team going out into the areas, helping these students, because a lot of them need a lot of help. And some of them, you know, maybe their parents haven't done their income taxes, just different things. But no one called me this year. Councilor Thornton can attest to it too, how many times we've had people call us and say, I got it in three days late and I did this and I did that, and they want us to correct it. But this time, I think the team going out and helping them is really great. And another thing you're to be commended for is these 250 students at midterm that we used to not allow. And I think that's great because education is the key to get us, you know, better jobs and better way of life. And I saw that when I taught at Carl Albert at the Little Junior College at Salasaw. And they're just wanting people to achieve, and Cherokee Nation is one of the main things that helps them get there.
Yeah, and it's really your most positive program. I'm biased now. But it's your most, providing assistance to people who need assistance to go to higher ed, and that's the best.
It's a great program. It's one of the greatest things we did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The chief walked in and I was going to see if he wanted to say a few words about
Where? Greetings. I've been flying all night, so. But, you know, I'm, I'm just blessed, and I think that the nation is blessed that we have this money, this many students wanting to go to college. And I feel doubly blessed that we've been able to find the dollars to make it happen. That, I mean, this council, when I, when I sat over there, I don't know how many times that we said education is one of the absolute most important things, outreach to our kids to get them in school so that they can have the opportunity for an education and a better life. I just, I just hope and pray that we'll make sure to order this and get them taken care of. And our businesses are doing good. Our growth in outside of gaming is doing well. And I just think that we would be remiss if we did not fund these students to start their career in college. Thank you all.
[inaudible]. I got two.
Who's the doctor?
Dr. Morton. Whoever you want, Mr. Thornton.
The Morton's.
Okay. The Morton's.
Hello, Dr. Morton.
Hello.
How are you doing? There's a couple of things I'd like to know. I'm sure that you can give us the statistics. The dropout rate, has it gone down very much and what would be the statistics on that?
Yes, it has. We're still, again, that's a number we're trying to get our hands around, but it has dropped considerably. There was a time... There was a time when we were losing students, the greatest number of students, at the end of the first year.
Yeah.
Where actually, if we keep them during the first semester, chances are we're going to keep the majority of them, vast majority of them, through the rest of the year. And that's where we plan for this outreach team. See, before, we had two and sometimes three people contacting students who are on scholarship. Now, we have, the student will talk to the same person each time they're assigned a counselor out of the scholarship office. So they can better monitor them online, by phone. And that's going to help us a great deal in cutting down the dropout rate. Then the two Promise Scholar students that we have, the program at Northeastern, the program at Roger State, where counselors from Roger State and Northeastern, along with our counseling person, we have a counseling person on staff at Northeastern for the degree program in Cherokee. So we've assigned her part-time to deal with those students so that we know when they start getting into trouble. The only way to stop it is if you know when it starts.
Yeah.
Before they get too bad. For instance, I'll give you an example. There were, one fell through the crack last year in the Promise Scholarship at Northeastern of roughly 45, 50 students. All of them better than three-point cumulative GPA. And these are students that are first-time college students, first time, first ones. We had one poor little fellow that someone overlooked because his GPA was .7. So we dropped him in that program. That's the only one dropped in the program. Some of the others left Promise, but they went to nursing or went to other areas. So the key to the dropout is contact, 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 making, keeping contact with the student. They have a friendly voice they can talk to and say, "Hey, I'm in trouble."
Yes, it takes counseling to do that. Now, do we have, do we give out any scholarships for anything above a bachelor's degree?
Above a bachelor's degree?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Could I find out how much?
We have 190 graduate students.
Okay. Could I find out the amount of people and the amount of money or the amount of students?
Yeah, they get the same amount as the undergraduate student. It's just that they can drop their hours.
How many?
They, we have 190 of them.
How many?
190.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Manny.
That's right, 190.
Yeah. 190, and they get 2,000 per semester. They range all the way from, let's see, to Dartmouth, George Washington University. They're usually those that are going on for specific higher ed degrees. Some in TJ.
They get the same amount of money as...
Yeah.
And also, all this cash match, is all this carryover funding that we're paying this with?
In other words, that the...
Million?
The increase, the budget mod increase, that would be a question for later.
Can I answer that question? Yes, the cash match for grants is current year funding. It's not carryover funding. They were related to, I believe it was at least two grants that we applied for, that we had matched, set aside for them, that we did not receive. And so that's money that's just still sitting in the cash match for grants accounting unit. So we're repurposing it here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Morton, we talked earlier in the week, there was a general alarm among some that the freshmen would not be funded. So I just wanted to publicly say, or you can say it, that all freshmen who have applied will be funded. And you're welcome to repeat that.
That is true. All freshmen that have a completed application on file and or eligible will be funded. I know I was in Fayetteville and Salem yesterday, and I was approached at both places by persons that said, "How come Susie doesn't get a scholarship?" "Danny doesn't get a scholarship next year." And I'm blaming all of that on Facebook. No one has said that no one's going to get funded, you know? It's just, we haven't funded the freshmen yet. So I think that, and you know how the rumors spread.
I was getting emails before I even had heard about this. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I do have a question. Was there, there was no letter sent out from education stating that nobody, that the freshman was not going to be funded? Nothing come out of education's mouth, no phone calls made, no questions answered?
Right.
That was something that was just put out, vicious rumor?
That was something, we don't know where it came from. Probably, someone probably called and said, "No, we haven't funded freshmen yet." And someone thought, "Oh, gosh, we haven't funded freshmen."
Well, I know a lot of the same calls from them.
Pittsburgh religious staff is seeing them freshmen right now, and they're all hearing freshmen and budgets funding.
And then, of course, when we submitted the first, when we submitted the request for budget mod, you know, who knows?
Thank you, Dr. Morton. We're running into checks time. So...
Can I say one question? Dr. Morton, if we were to pass the CAR tags to go statewide, if we were to pass that, the formula we have right now for the 14-county district schools getting the money from the CAR tags, have we started thinking of a process, or you guys already have one in place, a formula about these schools outside the 14-county? Or is that, was, or is that too early to even look at?
I'm more afraid to touch that than this one.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Dr. Morton.
I'll wait in your direction.
Okay.
Is it packed? Can we go acclamation, you think?
Yes. I second that.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, and will this need to go tonight? Anything for tonight? Okay. And any announcements? Next regular meeting is Thursday, August 29th at 3:00 p.m. Hear any motions for adjournment?
None.
Second?
Second.
We're adjourned.